Let the record reflect, we have reconvened with all members present. Please rise for a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Feels like spring is back again and long-range forecast looks like it's maybe here to stay, hopefully. And we forgot to, or I forgot to have us discuss executive minutes, but unless there's, we'll have a motion and a second, and if there's any discussion on executive, we'll just push it to the next meeting. May have a motion for executive minutes of March 14th, 2016.
Joe moved.
Were there any need for discussion on those? Okay. We don't need a roll call, you can just do places, right?
Yes, absolutely.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition or...okay. And the regular minutes of March 14th, 2016, a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And a motion for the executive minutes of March 28th, 2016?
So moved.
Second.
Were there any things that's discussed that we need to push that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Epstein.
You don't have to.
I know.
Okay.
I do that purposely.
All right. And a motion for the regular minutes of March 28th, 2016?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Epstein.
And one upstancious. Couple of library announcements first, and then I'll go on to some other things, but the Madison Public Library is hosting the Green Fair on this Saturday, April 16th, from 1:00 to 3:00, so right after you do the Little League Parade, which goes off at noon, you can go on to the library for the Green Fair. It's going to be at Libraries Chase Auditorium. The event is sponsored by Sustainable Madison and the Madison Environmental Commission and the library. The fair is intended to introduce sustainable lifestyle choices, raise awareness regarding environment issues, and demonstrate how consumers can reduce their impact on the earth by selecting sustainable, eco-friendly products and service, plus products and services, and much more. Green businesses, nonprofits who mission aligns with eco-consciousness have been invited to participate. And as part of this event, the Great Swamp Watershed Association is offering discounted lead testing. Test kits are available at the library this week for a $10 deposit. Participants are asked to return the household sample, completed paperwork, cash or check made out to the Great Swamp Watershed Association during the Green Fair. Lead tests are $30, and copper testing is additional $20. Other programs this week are mindfulness presented by Mary Lee Crowley on Tuesday night at 7:00 PM, that's tomorrow night, and another APP party, that's APP, on Thursday, April 14th at 5:00 PM. And the Children's Services Department is participating with other Morris County public libraries and Step Into Story programs. Area residents are invited to visit participating libraries during the month of April, experience the world created in featured stories. The Madison Library is featuring Charlotte's Web by E.B. White. And each library you visit, you'll have an opportunity to enter to win a prize. Water here for a second. And the employee of the month for April is Patrolman Bart Glab of the Madison Police Department, who received nomination for the 2015 Mothers Against Drunk Driving Award, second year in a row winning this honor. And this is for his commitment and dedication in removing impaired drivers from the streets of Madison and making our communities safer. So congratulations to Bart Glab on that. And anniversary, Ben Samara of the Madison Health Department, his 25th anniversary on April 1st. Also on April 1st, I had the honor of going to the Elks Club, where they had a surprise party for Janet and Paul Laco. And I presented a proclamation on behalf of the governing body, and I called it an iceberg proclamation, because what was, what fit on one piece of paper was only a tip of the iceberg for what Janet and Paul have done for the borough of Madison over the years. Janet, in her years of directing community houses, delivered programs to Madison such as expanded childcare, preschool programming, and partnered with many community organizations such as Dress for Success, as well as providing a home for scout groups and other community groups. Paul is in the Madison League Hall of Fame for his years of volunteering. He currently serves as a chair of the Parks Advisory Committee, served on the Shade Tree Advisory Board, presented, he actually preceded me as the president of Men's Softball League, and that's, that's a challenge in itself, I can tell you personally. He's also served as a grand exalted ruler for the Elks Club, and he now volunteers to set up for all Elks Club events. And he is so dedicated that he was tricked into setting up his own surprise party. They had told him there was this shower that evening, and so he was a little surprised when he came in to see all his friends there, but it was great to, to honor them. And if you see Paul or Janet on the street, please thank them for all they've done for Madison, continue to do so. And my last thing is to announce, as we talked about on New Year's Day, we have put together a symposium on historic and street skate preservation. And this is all Madison residents are invited to attend this, and this is going to be Wednesday, April 27th at 7:00 PM. Jeff Gertler on the planning board is taking the leadership and pulling this together. I also want to thank Ostry for her help on pulling all this together. It's going to be a two-part meeting. The first part is presenting from experts what works in other towns, and the second part will be group participation, where we'll break up into various groups. You'll be able to discuss what you heard from the experts, and each group will report back what they think may work for Madison. So come and join us. Again, that is Wednesday, April 27th at 7:00 PM. And Christine, I have a copy of the draft agenda for you, so I'll give that to you before you, before you go. But mark the calendars. And that is all I have. And go on to reports from committees, utilities. Mr. Wolkowitz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to begin by talking about the electric utility. As I'm sure we're all aware, on April 2nd, we had very high winds in town, caused a significant amount of damage in terms of tree limbs and trees coming down. And of course, when they come down, they have a tendency to take power lines with them. And not only did that happen, but a pole was broken on Garfield Avenue. And all of that was repaired, as usual, promptly. Interruptions of service were minimal. And again, I think we owe our electric department a thank you for a job very well done. Compared to some of our nearby neighbors, we, as usual, made out very well. The St. James', I'm sorry, the James Park Substation, which had, had a damaged generator, is now re-energized. And so the town is now back to where we were before, all generators up and running. And, and not that it caused any problems, but it's always nice to have one in reserve. And indeed, that's where we are. The electric department also installed a number of new poles around town, including some for Verizon, who they assisted in the process. They reconstructed a lamppost on Park Avenue, and they did quite a few streetlight repairs and service upgrades. The water department has continued the mandated testing, the state mandated testing for total coliform e coli and volatile organic compounds that's ongoing, and I mention that because it should give you a sense of confidence of the quality of our water. The electric department actually had, and I always find these very telling, 70 requests for locating and marking underground utilities for homeowners, contractors, and other utilities. Well E, which is a well we have spoken of many times, has been, it's still in process of being totally brought up to snuff, but we at least have had the time clock to pump out the well in process. And the electrical installation for the new generator is complete, so we should be completely done there shortly. And the only other thing I want to mention is we repaired three main valve boxes that had been damaged by snow plowing. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Health, Mr. Catalonello.
Thank you very much, Mayor. One second here, please. I'm woefully ill-prepared. Okay. Treetown 55-plus Community Needs Assessment. The Madison Health Department wants to remind residents that the Community Needs Assessment is still open in focus groups with residents and community partners are now beginning. The data collected will assist the coalition in understanding what can make Madison and the Chatham's better communities for aging in place. The survey is available, we can post it out there. It's listed in RoseNet, there's a hard copy is at the YMCA, the Senior Center, or the public library. Spanish version of the survey is also listed on RoseNet. Residents of Madison, Chatham Borough, Chatham Township, age 55 years and older are encouraged to complete the survey and share their thoughts about transportation, housing, community activities, and health services. For questions or to participate in the survey or focus groups, please contact the Madison Health Department at 973-593-3079. The Madison Health Department and Mayor Robert Conley partnered with the Madison Whole Foods Markets on a free community event to kick off National Public Health Week 2016. The event was held at Whole Foods on April 3rd from 11:30 to 3:00. The event offered free healthy food options for Madison and surrounding town residents, as well as health promotion and education materials for each topic every day of the week. The 50-year-old and over attendees had the opportunity to take home a calendar with daily challenges as well as other giveaways. The week's topics included stress and its effect on your health, exercise and its effect on your health, economic mobility and health, social justice and public health, healthy diet, quality healthcare and prevention, and how to strengthen public health infrastructure. The Madison Y also participated throughout the week, informing Madison residents of programs they offer the community. While Public Health Week is officially over, information on all the topics will be available at the Madison Health Department for the entire month of April for anyone who wishes to stop by. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
You. Finance Borough Clerk, Mr. Landrigan.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. Obviously, tonight, as everybody can see on the agenda, we'll be voting on the budget, so that's it from the finance side. From the Borough Clerk, May 17th is voter registration deadline for the primary election. The Borough Clerk's office will be open until 8:00 PM. Mail-in ballot applications are also available in the Borough Clerk's office or on MorrisElections.org. And finally, the electric utility rebate forms are also available in the Borough Clerk's office after the council approval of the ordinance 16-2016 this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
You. Public Safety, Ms. Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a report from the Fire Department. During the month of March, the Fire Department responded to 99 calls for assistance and conducted two department training drills. They had 14 general alarms, 18 still alarms, 25 investigations, and 42 medicals. For the first quarter of the year, the Fire Department has responded to 319 calls for assistance and conducted five department training drills. The calls are broken down as follows. They've had 76 general alarms, 41 still alarms, 90 investigations, 112 medicals. For the first quarter of the year, the Fire Department has conducted 58 fire prevention inspections, 25 re-inspections, 24 safe housing inspections. They've collected $3,420 in non-life hazard fees, $6,582 in life hazard fees, and $1,000 in fines. They also conducted 61 smoke alarm CO resale, on resale and rental inspections. And they collected, for those resale and rental inspections, $4,980. From the Police Department, on March 28th, the Madison Police Department co-hosted an employee lunch and learned to with the Madison Health Department. The training on employee health was conducted in the Emergency Operations Center and was deemed a success. Future seminars are forthcoming. On April 6th, the Madison detectives arrested a gentleman from Chatham, New Jersey on 17 counts of criminal mischief to vehicles parked in the STS Tire Center on Main Street. The business was experiencing numerous windows being shot out with a BB gun over a one-month period. Detectives set up surveillance and caught the suspect in the act. The damage is believed to have exceeded $5,000. They want, the Police Department wants to know if anyone has had any unreported vehicle damage while it was parked at the STS lot. They'd really like to know that, so you can call Detective Sergeant Paul Kozakowski at the Police Department. I want to talk about a couple of little extra things from other committees, if you don't mind.
Sounds good.
About a month ago, we were contacted by two groups from Drew University, who are the civic scholars. And the civic scholars are required to find a project that is community-based in Madison. So on April 18th, we have a group of civic scholars that will be cleaning up Springbrook Tributary, and they'll be there from like 2:00 to 4:00. It's a pre-May day event for them. So there's about 14 students, and we're going to supply them, well, we just found out tonight that the Whippany River Watershed is going to supply them with trash bags and, and supplies for the cleaning. Bob Vogel has been helping us with it and making sure that the tributary is, is okay for them to be working in. And of course, Lisa Ellis, who has been a major force and contributor to help the students with this project. So it's going to be very interesting to have them come down and to work on that. Also, another group of civic scholars recently reached out to the Patriotic Celebration Committee. And what they are doing is they're hosting an afternoon for veterans to meet and talk about their experiences during the war. Most of the committee members are Vietnam veterans, and they were anxious to speak with, you know, the kids at the colleges, because as we know what happened during that war, it was very misunderstood, and it was a lot of contention on, on many of, of the college campuses. So they were honored that college students are now willing to listen to what happened to them during that, that war. So the two young people that are leading this is Alyssa Peterson is, is the civic scholar who is reading, who is leading the Springbrook Project, and Chatham Studer is leading the one for Patriotic Celebration. So on April 16th, there, there will be probably about two hours, 4:00 to 6:00, at Drew University, the meeting of all of these veterans and whatever. So the Patriotic Celebration Committee is very anxious to do this and are honored by that. And what that would be, that's a great thing, to see this community of young people coming down to Madison and working on two great projects like this, so.
Excellent.
It's nice to know it.
Yep. Community Affairs, Ms. Bailey.
Thank you, Mayor. Madison's telephone reassurance volunteers, Charlie May, Harris, Angie Monti, and Kay Shaler, were recognized for their service at a brunch in Mountain Lakes on Wednesday, March 30th. They arranged schedules, trained new recruits, assembled statistics, and have participated in the program for at least 10 years. This is from the Senior Center. The seniors also have an upcoming trip to the Snug Harbor Cultural Center and Botanical Gardens on Saturday, on Staten Island. And registration is, they've still got some spaces, and it continues through May 13th. There are only 10 spaces remaining for the Friends Annual Spring Luncheon on April 20th to honor the AARP VITA tax volunteers. To date, 187 people have had their taxes filed at the Senior Center. From the DDC, May Day is on the 7th, a Saturday. Donations and/or volunteers are needed. Please go to RoseNet.org to sign up and participate. And the farmer's market begins Thursday, June 2nd, between 2:00 and 7:00 PM. There'll be an expanded market, and there will also, we will continue the weekly musical performances. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Works and Engineering, Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First on the Public Works Department, the team has been completing the work needed to get our ball fields ready for the spring sports. Everything is taken care of at this point. The road crew has been sealing cracks on John Street that will be moving to Valley and Hamilton very shortly. Additionally, the men have been working on the security alarms for the lift stations, that's for the sewer system, and performing work in advance of the Mill and Overlay project. From the Engineering Department for Roads, bids for the 2016 road reconstruction program were opened on March 31st, with all bids falling within the budget amount for the project. A total of eight bids were received, and tonight we'll be voting on the winning bid by Cefeli and Sons. In addition, the state has approved a grant of $172,500 for the Prospect Street reconstruction work. After review and approval by a New Jersey DOT, we can advertise for bids. I want to thank Bob Vogel and his team for another successful round of grant funds. This money helps us increase the amount of critically needed capital work that we can do every year. For the sewers, cleaning and CCTV inspection of the Madison-Chatham Joint Meeting trunk sewer line between Garden Ave. and Brook Lake was completed last week, and another round of cleaning and inspection is scheduled overnight this week. Mr. Wolkowitz already reported on the water department, so skipping down to parks. The Danforth Road Sports Field Remediation Phase II has a public opening, a bid scheduled for this coming Thursday, April 14th, in the municipal courtroom. And on the Memorial Park Field, i.e. the skating rink, irrigation improvements were completed last week, and final topsoil and seeding is scheduled so the new playing surfaces can be fully established by the fall. And finally, from the Building Department, the Building Department, which had a very busy 2015, is having an even better 2016. All activities and revenues are up over 20% year-over-year. That's it. Thank you very much.
Very much. All right, tonight is the budget hearing. Let me just outline how this will work. We'll be opening the hearing shortly, and during that time, you can comment or ask questions related to the budget. Then we'll be introducing two resolutions. The first one is only limited to amendments after review from the state, and our, Jim Burnett, our CFO, will explain what those are. And then the second resolution will be the actual adopting of the budget. So anyone who wishes to comment or ask questions on the budget, again, our auditor, Valerie Dolan, is here to handle any questions, and Jim Burnett will also be available for questions or comments. Please step forward to the lectern, state your name, your address, and write the same on the clipboard there, and try to keep your comments and questions to three minutes or less. Anyone wishing to ask questions or comment, please step forward.
A rumor is, I served on the Downtown Development Commission, and a rumor has been going through that funding for a downtown development, downtown manager may be struck from the budget. And I'm here to speak in favor of that funding. Last month, The Atlantic Magazine did an article on the state of communities in the U.S., and Jim Fallows put together 11 points for a thriving community. The fifth was that they have a downtown, that they have a thriving downtown. And he described the thriving downtown as one where positive signs, second and third-floor apartments, condos over restaurants, and stores with lights on at night suggest that the downtown has crossed a decisive threshold and will survive. I believe that Madison can achieve that. I think that Madison is well on its way to achieving that. But I think it has, it has gotten that way because along the way, we have been shepherded. We had Jim Burnett as the Main Street Executive. We had Janet Alaco before him. Right now, in an unpaid position, we have Lisa Ellis. We are committing ourselves to studying what we need to do to bring back the downtown, but we need to have somebody to shepherd that plan through. We can't leave it to volunteers, and we can't leave it to volunteers to fund that position. That position needs to be funded by the governing body. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make comments or ask questions, please step forward.
Connor Ford, 14 Stonehedge Lane. I'm a Rocker student. I am currently conducting research for my paper regarding environmental planning. And I was wondering, does, I know Madison has their own grid, and they're not a part of PSENG or any of those companies. I was wondering, why is it that PSENG charges less for energy at nighttime, and Madison does not do that? And, yeah, that's my question.
Guess that's related to the budget, so we can, we can talk about smart meters and the ability to, as we shift technology, the ability to do that, or as I look at our CFO to handle that question?
Connor, in order to charge what's called time-of-use rates, which is what that is, you need to have a meter that can collect 15-minute interval data. We don't have that right now. We have the old-fashioned man with the meter book walking around writing in pencil what the meter reader is. However, we're hoping in May that we'll have kind of a final presentation from a company that we're considering for metering infrastructure. That metering infrastructure, we will start out kind of on a test mode to see if it works, and from there, we'll be going to council and saying, how quickly do we want to fly this out? It would be for both water and electric meters, and it would allow us to do that. For sure, we want to accelerate the use of time-of-use metering for the top 50 customers. Over half of our entire electric consumption is, or almost half our electric consumption is the top 50 customers. So they're the ones that are probably more likely to be able to ratchet back or change their consumption based on economic factors, and that's, that's really what the whole point of time-of-use metering is.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to ask questions or make comments on the budget? Seeing none, I close the hearing. I have a motion on Resolution 120, Resolution of the Borough of Madison to amend the introduced budget.
Mayor, I move Resolution 120-2016.
I second it.
Okay. Jim, can you explain the amendments, and, and then we'll have council discussion?
Sure, Mayor. There were very small amendments that were driven by the state review process. Certain revenues needed to be inside the cap, outside the cap. What's important to note is that, and you've got a copy of the resolution, is that no revenues change, and really no numbers change in any way that affect this document. This is the document from, that we discussed on May 14th, that summarizes the big 40-page, you know, hundreds of numbers, state documents. So this number doesn't, none of these numbers change inherently at all. It's just minor little tweaks of $2,000, $5,000 within a few lines that was requested by the state during the budget review process.
All right, any questions or comments on just the amendment? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
All right, I have a motion on the, on Resolution 121, Resolution of the Borough of Madison, finally adopting the 2016 budget and tax resolution.
Mayor, I move Resolution 121-2016.
I second it.
And council discussion, what we'll do is kind of reverse from last time, where in previous discussions, the chair of finance opened up, we'll finish it there. Assuming everyone wants to make a comment, we'll just go around from there, so start with Ben, if you have any comments. And you're free to pass also.
Well, I actually would like to comment. Thank you very much, Mayor. I have a brief statement regarding the budget this year. I want to, and I'll read it and keep it, as I said, rather brief. Tonight, this council will complete what is arguably the most important Tonight, this council will complete what is arguably the most important thing it does, which is approving the municipal budget. Our budget for fiscal year 2016 is consistent with the budgets of the last several years, reflecting adequate investment in capital, constrained increases in property taxes, and the application of three sources of surplus, water, electric, and municipal. As with our budgets of the last few years, this comes with no reduction in any of our municipal services. I will unhesitatingly vote yes for this budget. That doesn't mean that I enthusiastically agree with every line. There are several items that are at odds with what I would have done if I had the ultimate authority to design and approve a budget. But budgets, like many things in life, require compromises. That doesn't mean that I feel that there's anything wrong with this budget. Quite the contrary, I expect it will serve Madison as well, if not better, than the highly successful budgets of the last few years. We operate with very tight financial constraints, both in sources of revenue and expenditures. At some point, it is likely that the borough will have to contend with a more financially challenging environment, whether because of increased inflation, lower surpluses, or some other variables. As I have said before, I believe this council should begin planning for such an occurrence by examining the potential for increasing borough revenues and/or reducing expenditures. I would like to see us begin where are likely to be very difficult discussions later this year. I want to end by thanking everyone who worked on this budget. In particular, I'd like to single out Jim Burnett, who became our CFO under less-than-ideal circumstances. Not only does he deserve thanks for guiding this effort resulting in a very professional and responsible budget, but he made an extra effort to clearly explain the components of the budget and the trade-offs it reflects. He also enthusiastically embraced the work of the Strategic Planning Committee on the budget, which I feel further informed the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Rob?
Thanks, Bob. Mr. Mayor.
We tend to be informal here.
What'd I say?
We tend to be informal here.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. Okay, so I'm going to vote against the budget. And I want to start out by saying, like Ben, I would like to thank everyone for the tremendous amount of work that they put in. I feel everyone was very diligent in their efforts in preparing the budget. However, the main issue that I have with the budget is the amount of revenue that we generate by, through income tax this year, I believe, is 46%. If I'm not mistaken, that puts us, if not at the very bottom, but in the bottom three of municipalities in Morris County as it pertains to revenue raised via tax collection. I think it highlights, now I voted for last year's budget because, I voted in favor of it because it looked like we had turned the corner and we had started to increase the amount of revenue that we were collecting via tax. But this year, we fell back and I just think that we have a structural issue with the way we fund ourselves. I'm not necessarily saying that the spending that we're doing is wrong, right or wrong. I have some concerns about that, but I do believe that we need to give all of the data to our residents and that by continuing the over-reliance we have on the electric utility surplus in particular, we're not doing that. We're still, just today, in a New Jersey Spotlight newsletter, Madison was highlighted as the number three per capita spender for municipalities with no fewer than 10,000 residents. So whether or not, I mean, the numbers, they look like they might be a little off, but it's published. The two that are ahead of us are Weehawken and Secaucus, and then comes Madison. I don't want to be in that number as it pertains to spending. And so I think that there's a lot of data that shows we spend an awful lot of money and we are reliant, and we're becoming more and more reliant, on these surpluses that we have to fund not only capital expenditures, which I have no problem with, debt service, but also the operating budget. So, you know, I'm not sure how many of you are following the news, but at the state level, you know, one individual, a guy by the name of Dave Tepper, maybe you know him, Bob. He was a famous investor. I believe he lived in Essex County. He's decided to move because he doesn't want to pay the taxes in New Jersey anymore. So him moving and moving his company from New Jersey to Florida is causing, wreaking havoc with the budget, the state budget, where he might be responsible for 1% of all the revenue. As crazy as that is, that one individual leaving can affect our state budget, we are even, imagine our predicament since we are even more leveraged to the electric utility surplus as it pertains to the way we fund ourselves. For those reasons, you know, in addition to a couple others, but that's the main reason that I'm going to be forced to vote against this budget. But again, I think that everyone worked extremely hard. I would like to thank everyone for their work on it. Again, I think the, it was a very rigorous exercise that showed good discipline in terms of presentation and data collection. I just don't necessarily agree with it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, I'm going to start off very simply by saying I'm voting for this budget. You know, Ben is absolutely right. This is one, probably one of the most important things that we do and sit and discuss is the budget as far as a council is concerned. Over the last couple of years, we've been trying to get more and more people involved in the budget process. So, you know, we were very fortunate. You know, we had the strategic planning groups come in this year and really give us wonderful presentations. And I think that we took those very seriously and, you know, we looked at how we could incorporate some of their suggestions and I think we did it. You know, we fell short in a couple of different ways, but this was our first year and I think that we did very, very well. I'm proud of the fact that there, we will maintain all the services in this town. Those are very important. It's the reason that people are living here. And I think that when you talk about Jim Burnett and what he has accomplished in just a few months, and I don't want to leave you out, Ray, because I know that you work very, very hard on this, but it was an exercise that was done with love and besides looking at it and making decisions that what were, what was the best things for the residents of this town? And that's what this is all about. What's the best thing? You know, how do we keep people here? How do we keep our services? How do we keep our beautiful downtown? In my business, I sell, I sell Madison, but I sell the services, I sell the downtown, I sell, you know, the volunteer spirit. And those are all here yet. I know we have to work on revenues. You know, that's been apparent for the last couple of years. But, you know, the Utility Advisory Committee has been working very hard on making some decisions and I think when we get the smart metering and we have handhelds that make it easier for us to operate, I think it's going to make all the difference in the world. Very proud of the fact that we're really working at shared services. We have a lot of shared services that bring us, bring a good substantial amount into this budget. And, you know, so, you know, that's about all I want to say, except that I am very pleased to vote yes on this. And I, you know, I thank the strategic planning groups. I thank the volunteers that have helped us and Jim and Ray, who have worked very, very hard to make sure that every resident is well taken care of in this wonderful, nice town. Thank you.
Thank you. Ostry?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I too want to thank our CFO, Jim Burnett, and our Administrator, Ray Cody, and Councilmen Landergin and Wolkowitz for this budget. I too will be voting yes. It does meet our goals of keeping the taxes low and providing all the services to our residents. We continue to provide funds for our capital projects for maintaining the roads and the infrastructure. And we have increased our revenues. We have increased our ratable base and we have increased grants this year. We paid down debt and we are still maintaining our AAA credit rating. My concerns going forward, we will need to continue to find ways to increase our revenues to decrease our expenses for our operating and capital budgets. And I agree, we've got to carefully manage our reliance on the surplus. That's going to be important going forward. Was it fun doing the budget? Oh, yeah, it was. The Strategic Committee planning and Jim's presentation were just great and it really does help us with the budget and I want to thank them. So that's it.
Thank you. Pat?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I read my statement, I just want to thank the gentleman who got up before to talk about metering. It's been something that the people who sit here know I've been very interested in getting us moving forward on, getting our metering into the 21st century. We're currently stuck in the mid 20th, I think. And I think it would be very helpful, long-term, based on some of the things I want to talk about, that we do have a better way of matching our costs with our actual, our revenue. And having smart meters, which allow us to do time of day, time of year metering and pricing, will significantly help us down the road as the price of electricity starts to flatten out. So, having said that, my comments on the budget. First, I'd like to thank the Borough's Administration and the Finance Committee for all the hard work that I know goes into preparing a budget and presenting council with a wealth of information that allows each of us to make an informed decision on the most critical issue of the year, our vote on the municipal budget. For three years, I have consistently promoted the adoption of budgets that grew at a manageable rate, did not increase their reliance on the utility surpluses for operating costs, something I do not consider a stable source of funding long-term, and focusing on any extra money we had on capital maintenance programs. Last summer, the council agreed with the recommendations from the Strategic Planning Committee on Budgets and passed a resolution outlining the guidelines that we should be following as we prepare and approve budgets. This year's budget not only fails in a couple of critical areas, it actually is moving in the wrong direction. Eventually, the wholesale price of electricity is going to move up. The borough will be caught in the same vice that it was seven to nine years ago. Last year, I supported the budget because we were finally moving in a positive direction, but this year I believe we're regressing and because of that, I do not think it is prudent for the council to adopt the current budget. So I will be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you. And I apologize, I meant to call Valerie Dolan, our auditor, up before the discussion, but I think at this point, you've been, as it was discussed prior, you, yes, so, thank you. I appreciate you being here, ready for any questions, and you answered them very well all today. Thank you. But I do not get to vote unless it happens to be a tie. I did get to vote four years ago. But if I were to vote, I certainly would be voting in support of this budget. I, again, echoing all six, oh, I'm sorry. You know, you throw me out of order and, yep. Let's go back to our Chair of Finance, Bob Landergin, and I'll pick up mid-sentence when it comes back to me.
You know, I feel like I'm at home. I always get overlooked. Okay, let's start the pity party. Anyway, I will be voting yes, obviously. And I just have a statement I'd like to read. Normally, I ad lib, but there's a lot of important points here. The Madison 2016 budget is one that we can all be proud of, one which many towns would envy. With a small municipal tax increase of 1.5%, the following has been accomplished. There are no service changes. All existing services have been funded that include garbage and curbside leaf removal. We have increased funds reserved for capital projects by $1.6 million this year to $5.2 million to address road projects and needed infrastructure upgrades and repairs. Cost increases associated with sewage processing, pension costs, and debt services were absorbed in this budget. MRC debt was paid down. Funds from Green Acres and the sale of the Green Village Road School allowed the borough to reduce debt and fully pay down 1.5 million in debt related to the MRC complex in 2016. And finally, funding for a downtown administrator is included in this budget as surrounding towns are aggressively recruiting businesses to fill storefronts. These towns have hired one, if not two, downtown administrators and they are our competition. And finally, Madison's AAA credit rating was maintained. I would like to thank our CFO, Jim Burnett, for the hours he spent not only putting together the budget, but measuring its performance against budget guidelines while fielding input and questions and providing feedback. I also thank the strategic planning committees for providing the forethought and guidelines that were used in this budget and for those going forward. Many thanks go to our administrator and department heads for managing costs. Finally, my thanks go out to this mayor and each member of this council for the open and frank discussions in public about the budget, a public forum where opposing views between council members are openly discussed as they should be and always should be. During this year's budget discussion, as has happened in recent years, the issue of property taxes versus electric rates was debated. As many of us are aware, we live in a state which has been trying to get property taxes under control. The constant rise in property taxes, as noted in many news reports and in Trenton, is driving residents out of New Jersey. We also live in a town that has its own electric utility, which aside from providing unsurpassed electric service, provides a source of funding for the borough projects, services, and tax relief. When looking at this budget, the balance between electric rates and property taxes was considered and debated at great length. Now, in regards to the electric rates, are Madison rates the lowest? No. Are they the highest? No. Does surplus from the sales of electric to the residents help pay for capital repairs and administrative costs? Yes. Has Madison been paying catch-up over the past three years for underfunding of capital projects in prior years? Yes. This underfunding and catch-up, if funded principally through property tax increases, would create an unreasonable tax burden on the residents? It absolutely would. Would an overly aggressive or premature cut in electric rates significantly impact Madison's ability to catch up with its needed road work and infrastructure work? Absolutely. In regards to electric funding operations, the strategic planning committees noted that the budget supports the services desired by the residents. Are electric utility, are electric utility bills paid by the residents and businesses predictable and controllable by the residents and businesses? Yes, they are. In regards to property taxes, consistent increases in property tax rates have, has a compounding effect upon the taxes each one of us pay. Using my home as an example, which in this case is an average home of 2,100 square feet and assuming an average municipal tax rate increase of approximately 1.25% to 1.5% a year versus a 2% cap each year, measuring back from 2013 through 2019, we did a little projecting here, the difference in taxes paid annually would have actually increased from a half a percent in 2013 to 5.8% in 2019. That's the difference in those two methods of taxing. Madison has one of the lowest per person municipal property taxes in the area and offers more services than any of the surrounding towns. It has been my position that any major electric rate cut, when we are paying catch-up in capital budget funding, is premature and impractical. Because of the hard work of the administration, department heads, borough engineer, and strategic planning committees, we are now getting a better handle on these costs for the next three to five years. I have held that once we have caught up with our road and project, and our infrastructure projects, we will look at a meaningful electric rate cut. That said, we are now looking at a form of electric rate relief this year after utility rates are in hand, in addition to the targeted program that has been in effect for the last two years. The electric rate rebate is increasing 50% from $100 to $150 this year. And I just want to conclude in saying the following. We are here to serve all residents of Madison of differing financial strata, both young and old. We're here to put together an annual budget that works for all to the best of our ability. We are in a service business and the residents have made clear the services they want. This budget balances the needs and wants of the majority of our residents in an equitable manner. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Nothing else for me to say now. It's all well said and as we- It's all well said, and as we are certainly not heading to a 6-0 vote, I do want to commend everyone in this council for challenging each other, challenging the staff, excuse me, and working so hard to do the best for Madison. We don't always have to agree, but I think in the end, we do the best for Madison, and this budget is a very strong one. To Rob Catalinello's comments about NJ Spotlight, as I pulled it up, yes, we are number three on that list, but what we don't know is, as we know with every list, is how we actually factor in. We are at 2,700 per capita, and number 12, for example, is at 2187, so, but what if you pulled out, do they all pay for sewage, or is that included in their taxes, or they pay for garbage and all that? What happens if you do some equalization? How much are they reinvesting in infrastructure? I think Madison should be very proud of what we do for our roads, for our sewer system, for our electric utility, for our parks. We reinvest at a much higher level for systems we have in place. So, very good list, let's equalize and see where we end up after the calculations. There could be a quadruple bogey in there somewhere, you never know.
Right, but the point is that only 46% of that comes from taxes. So if, when, not if, but when the electric utility surplus goes away because wholesale prices go up, we won't be able to spend the way we did, and then you're going to be forced to make decisions and cut when you don't want to.
Yeah, but I think with the work of the Budget Advisory Committee, or Strategic Planning Committee, we have the tools in place to make sure we get, we're moving in the right direction each year, and we'll continue that. So with that, let's have a roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
No.
Mr. Landergan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
No.
Great, thank you very much, and thanks again for everyone's work. Communications and petitions?
None received, Mayor.
All right, now, we're on the first of two invitations for discussion. This is limited to items that are on the agenda discussion, and actually, there are none today. The MRC stormwater runoff has been pulled from the agenda and to be possibly brought back later, but you can comment or ask questions on any resolutions that are on the consent agenda. So if you wish to comment on any resolution, please come up to the lectern, state your name, your address, and the resolution you want to speak to. If you want to make general comments, that will come up shortly. Anyone wishing to comment on the resolutions? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and we move right on to ordinances for hearing.
The ordinances scheduled for hearing were introduced by title and passed on first reading at a regular meeting of the council held on Monday, March 28, 2016. All were posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public requesting same.
I call up ordinances for second reading and ask the clerk to read set ordinances by title.
Ordinance 14-2016, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $22,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for replacement of a brick planter on Waverly Place.
I open the hearing for ordinance 14. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I move ordinance 14-2016.
I second it.
Any council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landergan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 14-2016 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance 15-2016, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $25,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for replacement of an alarm system for the utility infrastructure.
I open the hearing for ordinance 15. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 15-2016.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landergan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 15-2016 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance 16-2016, ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending ordinance 6-2015, which established and set forth requirements for an electric rebate credit program.
I open the hearing for ordinance 16. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
I move ordinance 16-2016.
I second that motion.
Any council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landergan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 16-2016 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. And now, we're on to the second invitation for discussion, and this is when anyone in the audience may comment on any topic. Please step forward, state your name, your address, write the same on the clipboard, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Anyone wishing to comment? John?
John Hoover, 17, Overhill Drive. It's my understanding that recently, I think on March 22, there was a shared services meeting between the Board of Education and the borough. I had been told by a council member and a senior staff person here in the borough that it was open to the public and I was welcome to come and make comments, but I was also told by the President of the Board of Education, confirmed with the mayor here, you, Bob, that it was a closed meeting. I don't understand which it is. I think it should be an open meeting. It's not, I don't think the meeting was, the purpose was to talk about staff, personnel matters, nor contracts. I think it should be open, people should be, people that want to step up as citizens to understand what's going on and to provide input should be allowed to do so. It is not a secret meeting, nor do I understand it to be a constituted organizational entity. So I just wanted to express my opinion on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So this is shared service, it does not, cannot take any formal action, it's two bodies working together, and neither body has a quorum on the committee. How does that fall under?
Under the Open Public Meeting Act, whenever you have a meeting of a body or bodies in which a quorum or quorums are present, you're required to comply with the Open Public Meeting Act, which is the notice requirements, at least 48 hours advance notice in your designated papers, posting it, et cetera. It would really be no different, so it sounds to me like what you're saying is you did not have a public meeting, you had a committee meeting of representatives of the two public bodies who had a committee meeting on a shared service concept or discussion. So that wouldn't be a violation of the Open Public Meeting Act. If the board and the governing body were going to have a joint meeting to discuss shared services, or, for example, when you, in the board, were discussing the school pilot and all that stuff, those were both publicly announced meetings where you guys had it. So, you know, I think for the record, there was not a public meeting, from what you've just indicated to me, that would require a notice where it would be open to the public. If there's a meeting where quorums are present, it does have to be open to the public, public has a right to speak, it could be heard.
All right, thank you, and certainly, that doesn't preclude the group from opening it if felt necessary, so I will take that back to the Shared Services Committee. In the meantime, anyone that, any resident that has desires as far as concerns or ideas what the two bodies can do, shared services, the more we do together, the better off we'll be in the long run. Here is a space to talk to one half of the shared service, and obviously, a Board of Education meeting is how to talk to the other half. So thank you for your time and feedback on that. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. There are no introductions of ordinances, so we are now on to consent agenda resolutions.
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected and fall in the minutes.
A motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to remove Resolution 123.
To be discussed and moved separately?
Yes.
Yep. Okay, so go ahead, make a motion on the remaining.
Excluding that, then, I'd like to move Resolution 122-2016 through Resolution 136-2016. I second.
Counsel discussion? Just a comment on Resolution 135. After seeing a note from the county, I suggested this one, which is the opposing Assembly Bill, Smart Container Act. Certainly, if it was 10, 15 years ago, I would be very supportive of a deposit program to encourage bottles and containers to stay out of our landfill, but I think New Jersey does a tremendous job in a recycling program, and if it's not broken, why try to fix it? And I think this is a, was a revenue-generating idea, and if, then just say that and do it differently, and not burden retailers and burden our residents in trying to change what is already working, so that's why that is in there. Any other comments? Okay, roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landergan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Yes to all, abstain from our 136. Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
And Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
A motion for Resolution 123.
Still moved? Second.
All right, council discussion?
Okay, I guess I'm the one who should open this up. In spite of my fondness for both the Festival of St. Gennaro, which I enjoyed many times when I lived in New York City and had the opportunity to celebrate it in Mulberry Street, and my respect certainly for the St. Vincent Martyr Church, I have two concerns. One is that the fireworks display will be in a densely populated area. A neighboring building, not terribly long ago, as you all recall, had a fire. I understand that there is adequate insurance on this event to cover such an eventuality, but I don't think that's insurance we'd ever want to check out. So I am a little concerned about that aspect of it. I understand the fire department took a look and approved it. I would feel more comfortable if they would take a second look, just because, as I said, the density of the area surrounding it. The other part of this is that we do have a noise ordinance in town which distinguishes between 10:00 PM later then and 10:00 PM earlier then, and so, strict interpretation of that would bring us to the conclusion that this is potentially a violation of that ordinance. Now, I, again, I don't mean for these to be nitpicking, and I support both the institution and certainly the event. My concern is that if we do this without further information and confirmation from the fire department, we open it up to other institutions in town, let alone individuals, block parties, et cetera, who may have similar interests, i.e. to have very late in the day fireworks display and do it in a somewhat crowded area.
Any other comments? Astri?
Yes, I agree, and also, this is the historic area of Madison, and I would hate to see something happen because of, you know, a seven-minute firework presentation. I think we can celebrate it some other way.
Up.
Yeah. My concern is purely from a safety perspective. It's, I'll echo what both Ben and Astri said, and my thought was, in a town that's two-by-two square miles, I have to believe that there's another area in town where this party could wrap up and maybe safely set off the fireworks. I know that's been done, let's say, on the high school football field or out in back of the high school, it's been done there for many years. That may be a better place. I just don't want to see anybody get hurt or any property damaged.
This event is before our next meeting, though, correct?
Yeah, that's where, I wish it had come sooner, that we could have hit, you know, the ability to have them listen to or adapt what they want to do to meet the neighborhood. I've already have some complaints about other noises in the neighborhood, and this would just pile on it, and, but you'd like to be able to work with organizations that want to have a very successful event, but...
Do we know why the fire department approved this? I mean, they're supposed to be our experts in terms of that type of issue.
Yes, Fire Marshal Ed Nun went out, it's 125-foot fall radius for the fireworks. The concern, I think, that's been expressed is they want to shoot the fireworks off the roof of the school at 11:00 PM at night, and, you know, Mark Yager's building across the street burned to the ground approximately 18 months ago. We've got historic buildings with churches nearby, we have a gas station half a block away, and we have 60 senior citizens who live on Wilmer Street, and it just doesn't seem the best use of the fireworks, and we had encouraged the church to consider Drew University or other alternate sites. They're having a festival, and they want this to be the culmination of the evening of the festival and have, that's the closing event, that's why they want to do it 11 o'clock, and the tight, it's so tight, that's why they want to shoot the fireworks off the top of the school building, and the fire department signed off on it, just sounds like...
It doesn't make sense.
You know, it does open the door to other groups who want to do something like this, and we just, we're encouraging them to go elsewhere, but...
Have they had fireworks displays before for St. Gennaro?
No.
This is a story.
And this is also to commemorate the construction of their, they got a school construction and expansion of the church, so it's also part of that ceremony. So it's a big thing for the parish.
And I think it's this, just, you know, I'm born on September 19, so St. Gennaro is, you know, is actually, the St. Gennaro Festival is in September, it's just that their spring fundraising event, they're transforming... Oh, okay. ...into a St. Gennaro-like, you know...
Now, his wife is wondering, but, yeah.
Oh, so it's a fundraiser?
Yeah, yeah, spring fundraiser, yeah.
Oh, okay, so it's...
It's the culmination, they're transforming, you know, the, I guess, the school into like a St. Gennaro-like party, so...
I was envisioning, though, why would kids be up at 11 o'clock at night, but it's an adult event?
A spring fundraiser, yeah. But the fire department's okay with it? Why is that?
Ed Nun, he checked it out, he said the fall zone is safe, the way they, depending on the wind conditions, we're going to have fire marshals on site, we'll have the police department on site. I mean, we do have adequate insurance, we have indemnification from the Patterson Diocese and from the school. We made a full disclosure that we have concerns, and they feel they want to, that they planned it, it's Garden State fireworks, they have a good reputation in the state of doing fireworks safely. It's just, it's a very tight site to do such a thing, especially when the building across the street burned to the ground previously.
It didn't burn because the firework landed on the residence. It's like somebody's...
But people get a little sensitive.
He's a little anxious about it.
So where is the fall zone?
They're going to, I believe, shoot out over the parking lot. They're going to have everybody stand towards the front of the property, and then they're going to shoot from the school towards the parking lot, and they feel that's where it's, that'll be the fall zone.
And do they have, like, conditions that if the wind is above a certain...
That would be the fire marshal's call, that's why he'll be on site, but that's a concern that there's going to be a lot of pressure to proceed.
Have they made the neighbors aware of this?
He required that as a condition of the fire department review, that all the neighbors within a 200-foot radius got a letter from Father George saying, "This is what we're doing, please let us know if you have a problem."
Did we hear back from anybody?
We didn't hear directly, I mean, some of the property owners have called me, I'm concerned about their property.
Yeah. Bob?
I think that the original suggestion here, that Ed go back and take another look, and really, you know, give us a little more detailed report.
We don't have time. Timing-wise, it's not going to work.
Yeah, it's fine. You know, and nothing's going to hap...
This thing is less than two weeks away.
I'm sorry?
It's less than two weeks away. We either approve this thing or...
I know it, but I...
Don't do it again.
So what would you, what would you say?
We either have to approve it, or we have to come up with some way to modify this resolution and say to them, "If you're willing to do this, then it's approved, if not, then you don't have approval," I think.
It's modified upon modified.
If you modified the resolution to approve a site that has been used for fireworks in the past, but again, that would require permission of whatever those sites are, whether it's Drew University or the Board of Ed, it'd be subject to them approving it, along with your approval.
Or if we offered them Bailey Eller.
They're really focused on doing it on-site because the people are going to be there for the fundraiser, they come out the doors, and then there's a fireworks to end the evening, so they're really dug in that they want it right there.
Certainly, I don't, all my time in Madison, don't remember any fireworks outside of Drew or the high school.
Not legal anyways.
Yeah, I was about to qualify that, yes.
I remember someone plying a f.
Bob, and then Rob?
Okay, I guess my other comment is this, I mean, I feel bad for them, I really do, because I can envision what they want it to do, and I get it. But if I heard right, the fall zone is going to be over the parking lot where everybody's going to be standing?
No, they will stand by the church, and it'll, they'll shoot from the school out towards the parking lot.
Out toward the parking lot.
But there will be cars parked there, but not people.
Right, and, okay, and, but they'll be...
Yeah, that's where they're gonna park.
It's a recipe, I'm...
Okay, I've heard enough, I'm prepared to support this.
It's our donation to their building by saying no.
So...
How long is the, do we know the duration of the...
Seven minutes.
Seven minutes.
And it includes a finale-type, so there's big booms going.
Oh, yeah. I mean, the seniors on Wilmer are going to be concerned about this.
I don't understand why the fire marshal, why we approve it if it's a problem.
Had that chat with him, but...
Huh?
I asked that question, he just feels it's safe and that he's built in the safeguards. It's slippery slope, but once we approve it, then you get block parties saying, oh, you let it shoot off the building, here, we just want to do it at the end of our street to close our block party. How do we say, no, you can't do it, you gotta go to a park or something?
I can't picture shooting out over a parking lot full of cars. Maybe if they shot it off of someone's roof for the block party, it'd be okay.
And roof warranties are our issue, but I'm sure that would void the one if we stood at the line. All right, so we will have a roll call, vote. If it is a no, I think we can at least let them know if they want to do it in the future, we need to have a little more, far more information and a whole lot of detail. If it's a yes, it goes on.
All right, Mr. Catalonello?
I trust Ed Nun, I say yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
I hate to go against the Catholic Church, and Father George is a wonderful man, but in sake of safety, I can't say, I gotta say no.
And at this point, we should be just votes and not comments.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Vitale?
Uh, no.
Bailey?
No.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
No.
Mr. Rowe?
No.
Point of order? This has got to be the first time that I voted yes on something, and five people voted no. I guarantee it's not, but, I guarantee it's not, but it's close. Oh, no, I guarantee you it is.
Could I just make a quick suggestion? I have no idea if this is feasible, but if the response of the group that's planning this fireworks display is to come back and say, well, perhaps we could do it a different way, or we do a light show or something else, can we give them a, I guess we can't give them blanket approval. They'd have to come back.
I make a motion, I move, that if the group sponsoring this comes back with another request prior to the event at a area that is suitable to the borough administrators, MRC parking lot, Drew University, something like that, that we approve it.
And approve by the fire department.
Yes, right. Approved by borough administration and fire department.
So to simplify it, at a, a location that has previously had approved fireworks.
I think it's a good suggestion.
So I make that, I make, I make that motion.
Are we okay with the time?
Second.
Well, if someone seconds, we vote on it, if it gets done, if they do it.
I'll second it.
We have a second?
Could I, before, I mean, we have discussion now on this? Yes, there is this other aspect of the time. Now, I don't know how sensitive you are to that, but I mean, it is late, and we do have a noise ordinance that says ten o'clock, and it's not to happen.
I think that's a compelling argument. I mean, you know, it's already...
I'm not, I'm just saying, that's the rules.
Yeah, I know. Well, that is a compelling reason to say no.
I mean, frankly, you, let me just say this, when the Borough does its fireworks in the summer, do you do it at eleven o'clock, or do you do it like nine o'clock?
It's a Sunday.
I think that you have to comply with your published ordinance, you can't make an exception to an ordinance. But I think it should really be twofold. It's got to be at a site that's had prior fireworks that have been approved, subject to borough administrator and fire marshal approval, and it has to conclude by ten o'clock in accordance with the ordinance. To make that deviation, you're gonna have the same argument from somebody else saying, you let them do it till eleven.
That's true.
An ordinance is an ordinance, and if the governing body passed that ordinance at ten o'clock, you can't, you can't deviate from an ordinance by a resolution.
And also, for the majority of residents in town who may be, or, you know, a good number of people might be asleep by then, to be awakened by loud noises, it's not a good thing.
But there are examples of neighborhoods who on New Year's Eve go out with a spontaneous eruption of noise. No complaints. They don't have more approval.
And they can get arrested. Bangin' a pot, pots and pans is not quite the same.
Well, it depends, it goes on for longer than or less than seven minutes.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, and that is...
Can we move the motion since it was after, oh, it has to be before ten o'clock?
Right.
In compliance with the noise ordinance.
Yep.
Let's just summarize the motion. It'll be a motion to approve the fireworks at a site that's been previously approved by the Borough Council for firework displays, so long as it concludes before ten AM.
Ten PM.
Ten PM, and the site, and the site is approved by both the Borough Fire Marshal and Borough Administrator.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call, vote?
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Good.
Great, there is, no unfinished business? Approval of vouchers?
Public safety, twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollars, eighty-two cents. Health and public assistance, four thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars, thirty-three cents.